Okay, you're now live.
All right, we'll start in just a minute. And it looks like it's seven o'clock, so we will call the meeting of the Dunn County Board of Supervisors, November tenth meeting to order. And we will have the clerk call the roll.
Supervisor Johnson?
Here.
Chairman Bartlett?
Here.
Supervisor Headland?
Here.
Supervisor Score?
Here.
Supervisor Steen?
Here.
Supervisor Zons?
Here.
Supervisor Gary Bjork?
Here.
Supervisor Maves?
Here.
Supervisor Quinn?
Here.
Supervisor Rogers?
Here.
Supervisor Anderson?
Here.
Supervisor Keneer?
Here.
Supervisor Crumery?
Here.
Supervisor Calabrese?
Here.
Supervisor Keeter?
Here.
Supervisor Vogel?
Here.
Supervisor McCullough?
Here.
Supervisor Story?
Here.
Supervisor Vandermeulen?
Here.
Supervisor Niehoff?
Here.
Supervisor Morehouse?
Here.
Supervisor Kennedy?
Here.
Supervisor Tripp?
Here.
Supervisor Prochnow?
Here.
Supervisor Jensen?
Here.
Supervisor Larry Bjork? Supervisor Larry Bjork?
Here.
Supervisor Bauer?
Here.
Supervisor Lino?
Here.
Supervisor Harton?
Here.
Well, welcome everybody to the ones that I haven't said hi to already. Welcome to everybody watching and to our staff. Let's go with the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, approval of the minutes. Has anybody had a chance to look at the minutes?
I move with approval.
Okay, Supervisor Steen moves.
Second.
Supervisor Johnson seconds. Any discussion on the minutes, additions, corrections? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Petition, presentation of petitions, memorials, and other communications, do you have anything? Recognizing the retirement of county employees Kathy Gillenbach, Robert Freystead, and Dan Prestabach. I don't know, I don't know how many years this totals, but it's, it's, it's right up there around eighty or more years that these three people total in experience. And I know they're all going to be missed very much and just the, wow. The experience that they have in doing their job is going to greatly be missed. And I think Dan would like to have a word if he's on.
I'm on.
Okay, well, go ahead.
I would just like to, you know, thank this county board, but especially like to thank the county boards of the past for their support for land and water conservation. I remember starting in nineteen seventy-eight and Roger Holmes was the county board chair, followed by Ray Score and Jane White and Steve Rasmussen. And I, one thing I really remember is the first land and water plan, asking Jane White to be on the committee or appoint a county board member, and she said, Dan, I'll be on the committee if you ensure that we'll get something done. And I've always thought that about county board and I appreciated her comments and her support. And I guess, you know, I'd just like to, to thank you for supporting conservation. And I also would like to recognize the farmers in Dunn County for the amount of land that they farm. And I really think we're making some good changes in soil health and that's going to lead to cleaner water. And just, I really have liked my job and I'm gonna miss it, but it's time to let somebody else take over, so thank you.
Thank you, Dan, for those comments.
Thank you, Dan.
Thanks, Dan.
I see people clapping.
Thanks for everything, Dan.
You're welcome.
Yes, thank you for your years. All right.
He's a good neighbor.
All right, moving on. Next is a public hearing on the proposed Dunn County twenty twenty-one budget. Before we begin, I'll remind all supervisors and staff who are participating in tonight's meeting to make sure your microphone is muted so that we can hear public comments more clearly. Information about how members of the public could cement comments by email or make comments in real time during tonight's meeting was provided in the meeting notice for tonight's meeting and is also on the Dunn County webpage. There have been no email comments received. I'll ask our web support specialist if there have been any requests to speak through Zoom during the public hearing. Krista, are you there?
Yep, no, there are no emails for a public comment.
All right. I guess at this time then, we'll close the public hearing. So, moving on to appointments, you should have all gotten an appointment list probably later this afternoon because we had one that I thought was in. And then I realized it wasn't. I remembered that at facilities, they talked about one and, and I'd never gotten the email. So I reached out to the Fair Board and got the name. So anyway, that's the reason you got it and updated list fairly late in the afternoon. So I need a motion for these appointments. I'll, I'll go ahead and read them. For Fair Board, the term expiring expires September twenty twenty-three. Appointed to succeed Cheyenne Kies is Jim Powers. For the Housing Authority, term expires November twenty twenty-five. I reappointed Terry Stam. Solid Waste and Recycling Management Board, terms expire September twenty twenty-three. Reappointed Terry Stam and Ryland Erdman. Transit Commission, terms to expire twenty twenty-three. Reappoint John Mans, Darren Witkoki, and Robin Sweeney. And the Transportation Coordinating Committee, term expires May twenty twenty-two. Appointed to fill on expired term of Sarah Olinger, Lonnie Dodge. So I need a, a motion for these. Gary Steen moves.
Second.
Second.
Diane Morehouse had her hand raised first. Seconds. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Now we'll move into the report from the county manager, starting with COVID nineteen update.
Good evening, everybody. I spoke with KT Gallagher, our Public Health Director, this morning, and took the following notes on the status of COVID nineteen pandemic here in Dunn County. As of this morning, we're at a total of sixteen hundred and sixty-one total confirmed positive cases since the start of the pandemic. Of these, five hundred and one are considered active. This is a, the total number is a jump of thirty-three additional cases since yesterday, but it doesn't show the whole picture. We have eighty cases pending in our inbox at the Public Health Department. These are confirmed cases that we've not, that have not yet been processed. That is contact tracing has not yet begun, and so they're not yet included in the total. Now, our capacity to do contact tracing at any time is about thirty-five. This means that we have more than twice the number of positives for the virus waiting for processing than we have the employee capacity to trace. The delay puts more people in jeopardy because those who have been in close contact to someone who has tested positive are not being notified in a timely manner, increasing the potential spread of the virus. Delays also allow the infection in persons who have contracted it to progress, potentially increasing danger to them. We are also seeing a serious impacts to our local healthcare system. The hospitals in the region are currently having to defer use of beds for things that otherwise would require hospitalization. And here in Dunn County, the contact tracers working at our Public Health Department are beginning to experience burnout due to the heavy workload and long hours. Should we lose track, lose tracers due to exhaustion, it's only gonna make the situation worse. The greatest percentage of positives is among persons aged twenty to twenty-nine, but the demographic that is seeing an increase in the rate of spread is in the older group, thirty to sixty-nine. Statewide, thirty-five percent of the persons being tested over the past seven days have come back positive. That's more than one in three. This should be sobering news for all of us. We should also keep in mind that deaths from COVID nineteen lag behind the reports of positive tests by ten days to two weeks. The greater number of positive cases we have, the greater chances of this worst of all outcomes. In conclusion, Dunn County is currently in a critical state with respect to COVID nineteen. Residents are encouraged to stay home except for essential activities, to wear a mask and practice social distancing when out of the home, to wash their hands frequently and thoroughly. Gathering in groups even of family is strongly discouraged. Looking ahead, with cold weather setting in, the odds of transmission of the virus are increasing. Unfortunately, family gatherings for the holidays will also create more opportunities for spread. Serious medical consequences, even death, are not limited to the elderly and persons with underlying health issues. The fact is, the end is not in sight for this pandemic, and each of us needs to do, continue to do our part to protect our family and friends. I'd be happy to try to field any questions you may have on the COVID nineteen report.
Yeah, Paul, this is Gary Steen. I'd just like to report that KT talked to our EMS and our Rescue Squad Director, Donnie Knutson, and they've made an agreement for our Rescue Squad and EMT guys to contact trace when they're available and do it, help out where we can.
I appreciate that, Supervisor Steen. The need is, is serious. The, I can't overstate the amount of work that's having to be undertaken, and we're simply having to defer. We simply cannot keep up with the caseload.
Any other questions? Supervisor Story?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just wondering, Mr. Miller, if there's anything we can do to help if it's being done by phone, if we're able to make phone calls, if we're able to chip in and do something to take some of the load off of them.
I'm not aware of what we can do individually because contact tracing takes training. But certainly by continuing to support our Public Health Department, support by enforcement and by example, the recommendations coming out of the Public Health Department is something each and every one of us can do.
Good, thank you.
Any other questions? Supervisor Crumery?
Thank you. When the hospital facilities are at their max capacity, where are those infected referred to go? Or is there another off-site facility available, a hotel, or something around that line?
My understanding, Supervisor Crumery, is that some, if their symptoms are mild, they're simply told to stay at home, to convalesce at home. The concern becomes when people have severe conditions that we could run out of beds. We don't have field hospitals in this region as we have seen in other ones, and we hope we don't get there. The hospitals have planned, they have made plans for surge, but we hope that we don't exceed the capacity.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chair, this is Tim Leno. I have a question.
Supervisor Leno.
Currently, what, Paul, currently what is our available hospital bed numbers? Do you, are you privy to that info?
No, I'm sorry, I'm not, but I will certainly try to get the information for you, Supervisor Leno, and get it back to you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Morehouse?
Tim, in answer to your question, if you log on to the County COVID nineteen maps site, there are tabs along the bottom which will tell you precisely what the hospital capacity in the Northwest region is. It's very helpful.
Thank you.
They did, they, they did have on the news today that the hospitals are at a hundred percent in the Chippewa Valley at this point. Any other questions? If not, moving on to purchase orders.
In your packet of materials for this meeting is the purchase orders over forty thousand dollars. I think most of them are self-explanatory, our highway department making purchases for outfitting. There's no equipment on our trucks, paying loans on the, the quads that we've purchased, paying for hot mix pavement markings, the frontage road payment for the frontage road in front of where Prevea is now located. Administration IT, the EPA Audiovisual, that's the Court AB System for outfitting the new courtroom and updating the existing courtrooms. That's COVID-related money that allows, improves our remote access to the courts. We've got the, one of the payments for extension, the payment for solid waste. Let's see, under Administration, toward the end, Administration IT, that CDW, the Trend Micro XDR, apparently those, it's a software that monitors intrusion detection, so when somebody tries to hack our system, it tracks it and alerts us. So that's what that piece of software is about. Are there any questions regarding the purchase orders over forty thousand? Vaughn, Vaughn Headland has this.
Yeah, Paul, just a question, Ergo Flex Systems Office Furniture for the Communication Center, is that a complete setup for them?
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry, Supervisor Headland, which, which one are we looking at?
Down fourth from the bottom, Emergency Communications, Ergo Flex Systems.
Oh, yeah, that, that literally is office furniture in the, in the emergency, in the nine-one-one room. Updating that furniture.
Thank you, Paul.
Mm-hmm.
Are there any other questions? Okay, seeing none, we have reports, Highway, excuse me. Highway Department Financial Report, County Treasurer Financial Report, and the Neighbors Annual Report. I hope you've all had a chance to look at these. If there are any questions, we could, first off, are there any questions, I guess? And if there aren't any, then we don't have to try to answer them, so. Supervisor Steen?
Yeah, this doesn't relate to their annual report, but I was wondering for the neighbors where we stand on the virus there for workers, and is there any outbreak in the three housing units?
All three of the buildings are in outbreak mode because of positives among staff. My last report was that there were three staff that had tested positive, and anytime we have staff that has tested positive, there are some rather stringent requirements in terms of testing staff and testing residents. That is the case with all three. It is, it is something that we're monitoring very closely. We, as the virus continues to spread, it does impact our staffing, and of course, we have persons that are, you know, they're in, they need care, they need twenty-four-seven care, so it is something that we're watching and monitoring very closely, and it is a concern. But yes, in answer to your question, all three houses are in outbreak protocols right now.
Thank you, Paul.
Oh, I, I'm sorry, I forgot Supervisor Steen. Two of the households, that's portions of the buildings, are in quarantine status right now as well, so.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Supervisor Calabrese?
I just want to say, in the neighbors' report, if anybody's looking for any other further reasons to follow the COVID guidelines, it says that the local positivity rate is, is one of the criteria they use to allow any visitors back in to see a lot of these people who are at the end of life, so if we can bring the local positivity rate down just for that, that's something to consider too, so I'm gonna make that comment.
Yes, any other questions? I don't see any, so moving on. Thank you.
One question, Mr. Chair.
Oh, Supervisor Bjork, go ahead.
There has been some, like townships that haven't spent all of the COVID money. If that goes to the county, does the county have enough programs where they could use that and not lose it?
Actually, Supervisor Bjork, appreciate the question. We reached out to some of the townships for that very reason to find out if they had unexpended COVID nineteen recovery funds. Several of them did, and we were allocated a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from the various townships. And yes, we definitely had purposes for it, so it was much appreciated. I'll note that our sheriff did a lot of that outreach.
But that time has passed.
Passed, yes, yes.
Any other questions? I can only see so many people on my screen, so if you have a question, I may not see your hand, so go ahead and ask, or at least say something to get notified, get noticed. Moving on then, number ten, consideration of resolutions, reports, and ordinances from the standing committees. Ten A from the Judiciary Law Committee, ordinance amending the county code, Chapter eighteen, second reading. This has to do with the ATV, UTV code, so. Is it self-explanatory? Any questions on this? We talked, talked quite a bit about it last, last month. Supervisor Tripp is here. He could try to answer any questions if there is any. I do not see any questions, and I don't know, Supervisor Tripp, I do not see you on my screen. Did you have anything to say to this?
I think we talked about it a little bit last month. It's pretty simple. It's an effort to coordinate the ATV regulations between the county and the townships. That's an ongoing effort and doesn't change any of the other rules of operation. It just expands the number of days per year where they're allowed, where they are currently allowed on county roads.
All right, if there are no other questions, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Same sign? Resolution passes. All right. Ten B, from the Committee on Administration, ten B one, resolution canceling checks over two years old. I need a motion for this. So moves. Supervisor Leno moves. Supervisor Story seconds. Speaking to this, is there any questions? Supervisor Headland, did you want to say anything about this at all?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just that is something, you know, especially for the board members who have been here for a while, something we do every year to get those old checks off the books. We do not cancel the fact that, that if someone would come back and ask for payment, we would issue a new check. But it's an opportunity for us to get rid of the old outstanding checks. Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Resolution passes. Moving on to ten B two, resolution charging back illegal tax certificates. We only have two this year. I need a motion for this. Supervisor Steen moves. Supervisor Bauer second. Speaking to this, is there any questions? Mr. Headland, would you like, Supervisor Headland, would you like to speak to this?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, certainly. This is something, again, it's a little housekeeping measure that we do every year. It's just to correct some taxes that were, and for the most part, property that was double charged, and we go back and, and remove those taxes. Thank you.
Any questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Resolution passes. Moving on to ten B three, this is still from the Committee on Administration, a resolution regarding FY twenty twenty-one pay grid and other compensation. I need a motion for this. Supervisor Headland moves. Supervisor Story seconds. Speaking to this, Supervisor Headland?
I'm gonna defer this to Mr. Miller, if I may, if that's all right.
All right, Mr. Miller, if you would, please.
Thank you. The Corporation Council is whispering in my ear, snide remarks, so you'll, you'll forgive me if I'm giggling. This resolution is related to the FY twenty-one budget negotiations. It is something that we do every year related to the adjustments to the pay grid and to the health insurance benefits. For this year, the adjustment is two percent to the pay grid for employees that are on that grid, but there's also a freeze in steps. Normally, an employee who successfully completes a year of employment with the county moves up a step. uh of employment with the county moves up a step. Uh, that's the normal progression. There are eleven steps and uh, uh, twenty five grades. But for budgetary considerations, uh, revenues being what they are, which are flat to declining while costs go up. It was agreed as part of the overall fiscal year twenty one county budget. We would adjust the grid by two percent so everybody gets some pay raise, but freeze the steps. That's one of the things this resolution does. The other is the changes to our uh health insurance, uh, including changes to the employee contribution on the premiums, the monthly premiums, and changes to the maximum out of pocket and uh copay deductibles. Uh, this again was an effort to um, strike a balance and uh, provide something that we could afford in terms of a balanced budget. It is a difficult, was a difficult negotiation and involved considerable amount of review and discussion at the Executive Committee level and the Committee on Administration level. Uh, but it is integral to the balanced budget that we will be taking action on uh coming up here.
Any questions? Yeah. I do not see any, so. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Uh, resolution passes, thank you. Moving on to ten C, this is from the Executive Committee. Ten C one is a resolution amending the FY twenty twenty budget, this year's budget. It's quite lengthy, there's a detailed explanation at the end of this. Uh, we have our CFO on, I believe, if there's any questions, so I will ask if there's any questions at this point. And I need a motion. Supervisor McCullough moves, Supervisor Johnson seconds. Uh, now, are there any questions? I don't see any questions. So. Our finance department did a good job in explaining it with the narrative. Uh, this is a, needs a roll call vote, so we will have the clerk call the roll.
Supervisor Rogers?
Yes.
Supervisor Score?
Yes.
Supervisor Steen?
Yes.
Supervisor Story?
Yes.
Supervisor Trip?
Yes.
Oh, I forgot I was gonna be recorded Supervisor Trip recorded as yes, and all the others were recorded as yes. I was forgot we're doing that, so my apologies. Supervisor Vandermeulen?
Yes.
Supervisor Vandermeulen recorded as yes. Supervisor Vogel?
Yes.
Supervisor Vogel recorded as yes. Supervisor Zons?
Yes.
Supervisor Zons recorded as yes. Supervisor Anderson?
Yes.
Supervisor Anderson recorded as yes. Supervisor Bauer?
Yes.
Supervisor Bauer recorded as yes. Supervisor Gary Bjork?
Yes.
Supervisor Gary Bjork recorded as yes. Supervisor Larry Bjork?
Yes.
Supervisor Larry Bjork recorded as yes. Supervisor Calabrese?
Yes.
Supervisor Calabrese recorded as yes. Supervisor Hartung?
Yes.
Supervisor Hartung recorded as yes. Supervisor Hedland?
Yes.
Supervisor Hedland recorded as yes. Supervisor Jensen?
Yes.
Supervisor Jensen recorded as yes. Supervisor Johnson?
Yes.
Supervisor Johnson recorded as yes. Supervisor Kennedy? Supervisor Kennedy?
Yes.
Supervisor Kennedy recorded as yes. Supervisor Keneer?
Yes.
Supervisor Keneer recorded as yes. Supervisor Crumry?
Yes.
Supervisor Crumry recorded as yes. Supervisor Keeter?
Yes.
Supervisor Keeter recorded as yes. Supervisor Lino?
Yes.
Supervisor Lino recorded as yes. Supervisor Maves?
Yes.
Supervisor Maves recorded as yes. Supervisor McCullough?
Yes.
Supervisor McCullough recorded as yes. Supervisor Morehouse?
Yes.
Supervisor Morehouse recorded as yes. Supervisor Niehoff?
Yes.
Supervisor Niehoff recorded as yes. Supervisor Prochnow?
Yes.
Supervisor Prochnow recorded as yes. Supervisor Quinn?
Yes.
Supervisor Quinn recorded as yes. Chairman Bartlett?
Yes.
Chairman Bartlett recorded as yes.
All right, thank you. The resolution passes. Moving on to ten C two. Uh, resolution amending the FY twenty twenty budget for COVID nineteen grants. If you remember, we took action in earlier in the year to to uh keep them all to the end of the year. And this also has a good narrative at the end. Explaining it. Are there any questions? For our CFO?
To motion to.
And I need a motion.
I have a question.
Okay, let's go with the motion first, so.
I'm going to, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Johnson moved, and I think it was Supervisor Calabrese at his hand up second. Uh, now for the uh question, uh, was that you Supervisor Bjork?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I I um, I would like to understand all this more. But as far as IT, how does that uh? Why is that such a large amount of money for COVID grant for IT? Are we purchasing equipment or what?
I can answer that, yes. The uh, one of the eligible aspects of the uh State of Wisconsin Routes to Recovery, um, funding the allocation to Dunn County, we were eligible to purchase things like the Zoom licensing that we're using for these meetings, uh, technology purchases like laptops and a whole host of technology-related projects. Um, and uh, that was how those funds were utilized, um, and it certainly helped the county be in a position to mobilize our workforce to be able to send them to work home uh remotely successfully. So, yes, there was a rather significant technology purchase with this.
Uh, could I follow up?
Go ahead.
How does that uh? Well, what's the indication as far as we have no uh, end in sight for the COVID? We've got promising stuff with vaccines, but when do we find, I mean? Is is this going to be an expense? That are, you know, the state's going to be paying us or the grants? Uh, is that going to be annually, or does does the county end up, you know, once you receive a grant? Do you have to then follow up something?
These are one-time allocations. The routes to recovery is through the Federal Cares Act allocation to the State of Wisconsin. Um, and it was one-time allocation. Um, we had to utilize it. The original deadline was last Friday. They extended it by eleven days, so we've got a few more days um to do that. Um, and that was it. That was the intended uh deadlines. Also, within this, all this COVID nineteen dollars, I did indicate at the top of this that it's also provider relief grants. Those were allocations, additional direct allocations that were made to the neighbors and to uh others that provide um direct support to individuals. Um, and uh, for example, DHS and public health. So these are our funds that we've received along those lines. Now, those have a different deadline, uh, and those are processed differently and have different eligibility rules. What we're doing here in this resolution, as Chairman Bartlett stated, is to recognize all these funds that have come in uh related to COVID nineteen, asking you to grant this official budgetary authority for the financial reporting purposes. Um, and we also included dollars that have been awarded but not yet used, for example, those provider relief funds. Um, but as far as any dollars beyond this, there are no commitments. I will tell you, part of the challenge we've had in this is in some cases, the state just allocates the money and we find out when it shows up in our bank account. Um, and that happened last Monday. We had a hundred and five thousand dollars that we didn't even know was coming that was added, so that was a last-minute adjustment to this. Um, certainly, we're trying to capture everything that we can, uh, but we really don't know.
I have a question.
Okay, Supervisor Jensen?
Um, so expenses on COVID nineteen for twenty twenty one could be on the county?
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I do have one correction for you.
Uh, go ahead. I I was just gonna follow up on Supervisor Jensen's uh comment there or question. At least when we're talking about IT stuff that the equipment has been bought, so like the computers for everybody to work at home and stuff. Now, I'm sure there's gonna be some uh, some, maybe some Zoom uh expense there, but uh at least the majority of it for IT has probably been spent already. And maybe, maybe that follows through on some of the other ones too. Go ahead, uh.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Supervisor Bauer did ask a question, I believe, earlier about uh, there is an administrative uh correction that needs to be made to the Budget Impact Section. That was not updated with one of the last changes. The grand total in the first line, uh, adoption of this resolution increases the twenty twenty adopted budget by two million, one hundred, seven thousand, one hundred, fifty eight dollars, thirty two cents. It should match the total lines up above the signature block, so I did confirm that uh between the question being uh raised and now, so that's just an administrative correction. Uh, if this uh passes, that will make to the final form.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Uh, seeing none, this also is a roll call vote, so we'll have the uh clerk call the roll.
Supervisor Score?
Yes.
Supervisor Score recorded as yes. Supervisor Steen?
Yes.
Supervisor Steen recorded as yes. Supervisor Story?
Yes.
Supervisor Story recorded as yes. Supervisor Trip?
Yes.
Supervisor Trip recorded as yes. Supervisor Vandermeulen?
Yes.
Supervisor Vandermeulen recorded as yes. Supervisor Vogel?
Yes.
Supervisor Vogel recorded as yes. Supervisor Zons?
Yes.
Supervisor Zons recorded as yes. Supervisor Anderson?
Yes.
Supervisor Anderson recorded as yes. Supervisor Bauer?
Yes.
Supervisor Bauer recorded as yes. Supervisor Gary Bjork?
Yes.
Supervisor Gary Bjork recorded as yes. Supervisor Larry Bjork?
Yes.
Supervisor Larry Bjork recorded as yes. Supervisor Calabrese?
Yes.
Supervisor Calabrese recorded as yes. Supervisor Hartung?
Yes.
Supervisor Hartung recorded as yes. Supervisor Hedland?
Yes.
Supervisor Hedland recorded as yes. Supervisor Jensen?
Yes.
Supervisor Jensen recorded as yes. Supervisor Johnson?
Yes.
Supervisor Johnson recorded as yes. Supervisor Kennedy?
Yes.
Supervisor Kennedy recorded as yes. Supervisor Keneer?
Yes.
Supervisor Keneer recorded as yes. Supervisor Crumry?
Yes.
Supervisor Crumry recorded as yes. Supervisor Keeter?
Yes.
Supervisor Keeter recorded as yes. Supervisor Lino?
Yes.
Supervisor Lino recorded as yes. Supervisor Maves?
Yes.
Supervisor Maves recorded as yes. Supervisor McCullough?
Yes.
Supervisor McCullough recorded as yes. Supervisor Morehouse?
Yes.
Supervisor Morehouse recorded as yes. Supervisor Niehoff?
Yes.
Supervisor Niehoff recorded as yes. Supervisor Prochno?
Yes.
Supervisor Prochno recorded as yes. Supervisor Quinn?
Yes.
Supervisor Quinn recorded as yes. Supervisor Rogers?
Yes.
Supervisor Rogers recorded as yes. Chairman Bartlett?
Yes.
Chairman Bartlett recorded as yes.
And the resolution passes, thank you. Uh, moving on to ten C three is the resolution adopting the FY twenty twenty one budget for next year. Uh, this is what we've been talking about the last two months. So I need a motion for this. Supervisor Linou moves, uh Supervisor Morehouse seconds. Any questions on this? Uh, Supervisor Keeter?
Yeah, I was just wondering, are we anticipating any reduction in income, in property tax income due to the disruption, economic disruptions from the pen?
I can try to answer part of that. Um, in working closely with the uh County Treasurer, uh, we're not seeing that presently, um, and we've not experienced that uh to the degree even expected for sales tax revenue. In fact, it's up slightly. Um, so we did not project a significant uh decrease there. However, we were very conservative when it comes to projecting sales tax revenue. Um, and um, we we kept that down with that in mind, but really, at this point, we have no indicators and um firm that we could say that we'd want to drastically cut that back, but we are definitely watching that closely. However, we did reduce significantly the interest earnings on uh the county's investments. Um, interest rates for that purpose are uh basically at historic lows again or are close to it, so our revenues are down substantially this year there by well over a hundred thousand dollars, so we've factored that into the twenty twenty one budget.
Any other questions?
I have a question.
Supervisor Bjork?
Uh, within this last year, you know, uh, we passed the resolution for the wheel tax, uh, bringing in extra dollars to the county. Is that res, where would that be um shown as an increase in uh dollars to the county? In here, or?
That would be in the detailed spreadsheets that were uh provided. Um, and it's out there on the web links. You could look under the highway uh budget, and that will show in the revenues. Um, last year, I should say for twenty twenty budget, um, it was not for a full year because of the implementation timeline um through the State of Wisconsin. This year will be a uh the first full year, twenty twenty one, so um I don't believe there was a significant increase um projected there. It was, I think it was two or three months of revenue that we didn't have available in twenty twenty that we were able to pick up in twenty twenty one.
Thank you. I just think it would be nice that uh when we ask people to uh pay a little more to uh privilege of living in Dunn County, that when it comes along uh showing what our expenses are, uh people can see that uh where their money's going.
Any other questions on the budget? I don't see any. So. All in favor of passing this resolution, say aye.
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 Opposed? Resolution passes. Moving on to ten C four, resolution adopting the FY twenty twenty one levy. So, I need a motion for this. Supervisor McCullough moves. Uh, second Supervisor Bauer seconds. Uh, any questions on the levy?
Mr. Chair, I do. Mr. Chair, I do have a, some comments here.
All right, go ahead.
Uh, thank you. Um, and I know the motion was made. Um, and I did provide the county board with an update uh, yesterday afternoon at four thirty six. Uh, there was an administrative correction on the illegal taxes. Those were inadvertently doubled on the resolution that was in your packet, so we would be looking for you to uh, act on the amended or updated resolution that was distributed yesterday afternoon. In essence, it dropped the amount for illegal taxes from two thousand sixty five dollars to one thousand thirty three. So that would be one correction that would need to be made.
Do you need that as an amendment, or can we just conclude that in the original uh, the motion as motion to pass the budget as presented post?
If we, if it was presented, I would think we could take as what it's presented because we had an updated one before the meeting. Uh, it just, it just didn't come out in a packet. Is that correct?
Yep, I just wanted to make sure that we're on, talking to the same document.
Yep, so. Any other questions? Comments? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Resolution passes.
Thank you.
Moving on to ten C five, resolution adopting the twenty twenty one legislative agenda. I need a motion for this. Supervisor Quinn moves. Supervisor Lino seconds. Uh speaking to this, any questions? Mr. Miller, do you want to, do you have anything you would like to comment on?
It's Just for the record, um, the legislative agenda we do every year. It represents a canvas of legislative items. We are going to request our state representatives to take up and advocate for us in Madison. It crosses all uh, departments and divisions. And it addresses requested changes to existing laws, eliminations of existing laws or addition of laws uh, representing areas of trying to improve the service uh, that we provide to our citizens. Uh, adoption of the legislative agenda uh, in the, in the coming year, we will invite our legislators to meet with us probably remotely. Uh, where we will present this legislative agenda and ask for their comments and for their advocacy in Madison.
All right, any questions or comments? I do not see any. All right, uh, all in favor of this resolution, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? All right, resolution passes. Moving on to ten D. This is from the Planning, Resource and Development Committee. Uh, ten D one is a resolution approving an amendment to the farmland preservation plan. Uh, Supervisor Quinn moves. Supervisor Anderson seconds. Uh, Supervisor Quinn, do you have anything you wanna comment on this?
I think the notes are pretty explanatory, but this is just a petition or request from a group of landowners in Grant, in town of Grant to expand an ag enterprise area in their, in their area. Uh, we had a public hearing on this on October thirteenth. Committee approved it, forwarded to the state to debt cap. And now with the board's approval, it'll be, it'll be entered into our amended comprehensive land use plan.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Not all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Resolution passes. Uh, moving to ten D two, resolution authorizing an application for the management plan implementation grant. Uh, Supervisor Quinn moves. Supervisor uh, McCullough second, got his hand up before Diane. Uh speaking to this, it's Supervisor Quinn.
Just real quick again, uh, this is, we were basically been invited to apply for a grant from the DNR that would support the implementation of our management plant on clean water in the watershed, Red Cedar watershed. Uh, basically expanding the ability of our saw health specialists to reach more farmers. Uh, to support the work of the two farmer-led councils and maintain the uh, demonstration farm programs to have in the county. So this would, this would support that. It would be included into amendment in the twenty twenty one budget. Uh, but if with the chair's indulgence, uh, I realize that I, I had myself on mute when Mr. Prestabach was uh, accepting our congratulations earlier. And this is like an example of the kind of work that, that Dan has done over the years. And we're gonna have a, a committee recognition of, of Dan before he leaves. But just really wanna say that uh, to follow up in the comments he had, and I wish I had not muted myself earlier, but uh it's really been a pleasure to, to work with him and the kind of leadership that he's shown has been made Dun County recognize around the state. Uh, but maybe eight years ago, our county board adopted our priority of clean water as one of our top priorities. And a lot of the responsibility for making that happen fell on the land conservation department and, and Dan's leadership. And he really has done a great job and we're, we really have a lot to thank him for. We have, again, the first couple farmer-led watershed councils in the state. We have three, four demonstration farms going on. Uh we have the, Dan's been instrumental in helping to organize and, and help fund the Red Cedar Watershed Conference. And that's in addition to the day-to-day feet-on-the-ground work that he and his staff do uh, with our producers in the county. So we're gonna recognize him in our committee, but I know we want, we wanted to make sure that, that the whole the whole board knows that this, this grant request is just one example of the kind of good work that he and his department have done.
All right, thank you. Any questions on the grant resolution? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Resolution passes. Uh, continuing from the Planning, Resource and Development Committee, uh ten D three is a resolution adopting a land use fee schedule for twenty twenty one. Uh, Supervisor Quinn moves. Supervisor Morehouse seconds. Uh, speaking to this, or Supervisor Quinn?
Yeah, so uh, in reviewing the, the, so the, the uh, staff have responsibility on several case, several areas of work to do inspections, to provide for approval of permits. Uh, we've realized over the past year especially that uh, with limited staff, it's been difficult to get those inspections done in a timely fashion or as timely as we want to have them done. And so we asked staff to propose some uh, ways to explore contracting for services when there's a busy period. And so we're, we're proposing that we raise the fee schedule fifty dollars per, in most cases, fifty dollars per activity, uh, which should be sufficient to cover the cost of contracting during those very busy periods. We're gonna be monitoring that during the year. And if uh, there need to be changes, if, if there are other ways of doing it that make more sense, we can adopt them. But that's why the schedules is uh, is being increased slightly, cover those costs.
Any questions?
Yes, I have a question.
Uh, Supervisor Rogers?
So you said it's during the busy time or is these fees for all the time?
Well, the fees will go into effect uh, at the beginning of the year. So they'll be, I think we decided the most efficient way and fair way of doing it was to apply the fees across the board. Uh, the reason we need to do it though is because when we do get busy, we uh, we have we have, we have a delay in services for contractors that gets in their way of doing their jobs sometimes. And this will assure that we have, are able to, to flow services uniformly throughout the year and not have that happen.
Can I follow up?
Go ahead Supervisor Rogers.
So how is that gonna help? Are, are they putting on another inspector forum during that timeframe? Or how is this gonna increase service to the community?
Sure. Uh, well, we will be contracting specifically with Cedar Corp. It has professional, you have to be certified inspectors that have gone through the appropriate certifications process. And so we'll be contracting with Cedar Corp when we have a need for services to do some of the, some of the inspections. That's how, that's basically how it will happen. Our staff will be involved in, in some of the, the back office part of those, of those permitting inspections, but we'll use uh, professional contractors from Cedar Corp to actually go out, do some of the physical on-ground inspections. And that should, you know, it should allow us to keep that timeline for, for requests for permits to uh, to a very manageable level for contractors and landowners.
Thank you for addressing that issue.
Sure.
They, uh, thank you for your comments. Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Supervisor Bjork?
Um well, I can see, well, I hear a lot about how this needs to be improved, the way we're doing it now. What kind of dollar value do you think, what, increasing these fees fifty dollars across the board? What kind of money are we gonna, projecting to think we would have available for high hiring uh, Cedar Corp individual to help with inspections? I mean, how, how much is this gonna generate?
You know, I'm, I can't remember the specific number and if Mr. Coulson is online, perhaps he could. Or Mr. Strainos, if Mr. Coulson is online, he could answer.
I don't believe he is, Supervisor Quinn.
I don't
He isn't available. We can, uh, a question like that seen, uh, Mr. Coulson isn't here, we can get that answer for you though. Mr. Bjork, Supervisor Bjork can let you know. And we should probably email that out to everybody, so we can do that.
Let me, let me just note that, you know, we will, we will provide, we will keep track of all the hours that are contracted for and all the fees that are collected. And at the end of the year, we'll be able to make, provide a, a assessment of what that was. So you'll be able to look at that and then we can determine how we should deal with it going forward in the future.
Any other questions? If not, all in favor of this resolution, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Resolution passes. Moving on for uh, to ten E. This is from the Judiciary and Law Committee, a resolution creating a crime prevention funding board and establishing a surcharge. Uh, I, I need a motion for this.
I move, Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Trip moves. I need a second for this.
Supervisor Headland?
Supervisor Headland seconds. Uh, speaking to this. Supervisor Trip, did you have anything? It's quite self-explanatory, but.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You're right, it is. If you read through there, a couple of years ago, the state legislature uh, passed a statute that allows counties to establish a crime prevention board and assess a twenty dollar surcharge on basically convictions in county court. Um, the money then is uh, um, allocated by the crime prevention board to um, uh, nonprofit agencies for the specific purpose of crime prevention activities. Uh, one of the things you should know is that this is entirely outside the budget of the sheriff's department. It's not just another way to add a few bucks to his budget. Um, and uh, if there are any further questions, I think the sheriff is still with us, is that right?
I am here and Chief Deputy Moltov is here as well.
All right, are there, do we have any questions for the sheriff or the chief deputy?
Yeah, I have a question.
All right, Supervisor Bjork? Go ahead.
I I guess I'm most concerned about why aren't we doing this already? And I thought we had boards of uh, leadership from different areas of the county uh, already addressing some of these issues. And as somebody mentioned one other time when we talked about surcharges, uh you know, how much can you beat people down? You know, you convict them with crime and then you're charging more money for, for that. I mean, you know, it's, it's like, you know, how many boards do we need? And why does, why does the victim or the criminal or whoever it is uh, keep having to pay and pay and pay? You know, they, you know, and do they have the money to pay?
Mr. Chair, if I might respond?
Go ahead Supervisor Trip.
Uh, appreciate your comments Supervisor Bjork, and these uh, questions did come up at Judiciary and Law and they were discussed. One of the things in particular, I, I asked the judges prior to a discussion at the uh, committee meeting if they would like to weigh in and comment on specifically the issue of the surcharges. Um they're not crazy about the idea, but they had no specific objections either. Uh, the general feeling among people from whom I've heard is that um uh, if you look at our budget, for example, the sheriff's department and jail has, I think, seven million dollars, something like that. Crime is expensive and this is one way of having the perpetrators help pay that cost. Um, I sympathize with you and I've heard the comments about these are people who uh, in some cases unfortunately got caught up in, in some things that are illegal. Uh, and now we're gonna slap them with an extra twenty bucks. Um, and that's true. It is true. On the other hand, what this does for us is it allows for some financing for programs that otherwise have really had to scrape and scratch for their survival. And I'm thinking specifically of the Crime Stoppers program. Um, done properly, and I believe this is a proper way to do it. This money will help to deter and eliminate the potential sources of some crimes. Uh, and I guess ideally, uh, if, if, if things were to work out perfectly, uh, we'd run ourselves out of business here. Uh, because of the prevention of some crime and helping people to uh, stay out of that system. So I understand what your, uh, what your sentiments are. I, I tend to agree with you in many cases. Uh, but these things have been discussed and we have had an opportunity to talk about it. And although it's not a perfect solution, it's one that I support. Thank you.
Any other que- questions?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question to lean out.
Go ahead Supervisor.
Uh I was just wondering, uh, with this conviction, would this be convictions of uh, of motor vehicle crime, i.e. speeding tickets, that kind of thing?
I'll defer to the sheriff on this or the chief deputy.
Sheriff Biggs, do you wanna respond or do you, would you like Marshall?
I can respond to that. No, this would be convictions of crimes only, misdemeanor and felony crimes.
I can respond to that. No, this would be convictions of crimes only, misdemeanor and felony crimes. Uh, traffic citation is a forfeiture violation, it's non-criminal. Until you get to, I mean, there's potentially some criminal traffic charges, O W I second and, and beyond operating after evocation in some cases. Those are crimes, those are traffic crimes, but your general run-of-the-mill, um, rules of the road are, are forfeiture violations, and this would not apply. This is criminal charges only.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
Follow up, please.
Uh, go ahead, supervisor Bjork.
Again, uh, how much money is this going to generate? Just like the previous one, I mean, you know, we're going to establish a board, h- how much money is going to be generated to, uh, pay for the board?
And in the budget impacted, it says it's going to generate between seven thousand and ten thousand dollars. In the narrative.
Yeah, I got it.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign? Resolution passes, okay. Uh, ten F from the Health and Human Services. Uh, resolution supporting the Commitment to Veteran Support and Outreach Act. I need a motion for this, supervisor Morehouse moves, supervisor Steen seconds. Steen. Uh, speaking to this, supervisor Morehouse.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, this should be fairly, uh, self-explanatory. There is pending legislation in the U.S. House and Senate, in the Senate bill co-sponsored by, uh, Tammy Baldwin, uh, called the Commitment to Veteran Support and Outreach Act, which recognizes the importance of veteran service officers and will provide, if passed, will provide, uh, support to states to support the work of the county veteran service officers. With the chair's indulgence, I note that Greg Quinn is on the meeting. I don't know if Greg wants to add anything in addition.
Uh, Mr. Quinn, would you like to comment on this?
I, I would, Mr. Chairman, thank you, supervisor Morehouse. Uh, they, probably the most important thing is, is with supporting this act is, it's to fill a, a gap. Number one is, as you look at the, uh, high, high suicide rate, uh, for veterans throughout the country, there are states that do not have county veteran service office, offices in their county. It is recognized they're the first point of contact, and the, um, recognition of the amount of money that they assist in bringing into the county, so it's, uh, it's a huge added value. And so supporting this, this act will not only fill that gap throughout the rest of the country, but it also potentially, uh, produces an opportunity here in Dunn County to, um, add some additional value. So with that, that statement, I'd, I'd, uh, answer any questions, but I'd be remiss if I did not mention what tomorrow is. So please take the opportunity to, to recognize any veterans that you have, um, close to you, if you are a veteran. My thank you, uh, for your service, so, uh, just want to take that opportunity since I'm, I'm on with everybody, thank you.
Thank you. Um, are there any questions? I don't see any, so all in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign? Resolution passes, all right, uh, we're down to announcements. Are there any announcements?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to follow up on his last, last resolution because tomorrow is November eleventh. And on the eleventh hour of the, of the eleven month was the end of World War Two, back in night, World War One, rather, and we called it Armistice Day. And then, of course, along came, we kept celebrating Armistice Day as the end of World War One, and then President Eisenhower changed it to Veterans Day. So tomorrow we will celebrate Veterans Day, and I think it's a great tribute to follow up on this rest, last resolution we just made.
You're breaking up, Mr. Anderson.
Remember, to remember to go out and, I'm sorry, to remember, go out and thank every veteran. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I think we got the gist of what Mr. Anderson was, uh, trying to say. Is anybody else like to comment? Any announcements? My screen, everything's locked up, maybe it's my computer. All right. I only have one announcement then. I only have one announcement then, and it, uh, has to do with the per diems. This is the time of the year that, uh, we'd like to get the per diems in so that any of the expenses from this year are paid this year. It, uh, makes, uh, the clerk's office, their job a lot easier. Uh, paying, paying twenty, twenty, uh, per diems in twenty twenty-one. They have to go back and do extra paperwork, so what day?
Oh boy. What happened?
No, it does look like he throws up.
Is that how they don't pay it?
I just informed our I T tech that they're having some issues down there, so he should be running down in a second, he's in the building.
In the meantime, just talk amongst yourselves.
And I tell everyone, today is the Marine Corps' birthday, two hundred and forty-five.
Wow, two hundred and forty-five years in Marine Corps.
First time I think I've seen the master county feed freeze.
Can't even ask Julie what that date is, huh?
It must just be the government center, because I'm sitting in the judicial center and I'm good here.
And I'm remote, so I'm not in the building.
Got a question for Kevin if he's come back up. Let's just look at, is that a nineteen eleven there on the shelf, the, to kind of a, a, an award gun or what? Can you guys hear us now? Yes?
Yes.
I'm sorry, we, uh, we're having technical difficulties right here, so maybe everybody else could hear Mr. Anderson when he was talking except with us. Oh, all right, well, I'm glad then. Um, I was saying at the end of announcements that, uh, this is the time of the year to get our per diems in before the end of the year. Uh, it makes a lot of extra work if the clerk's office is paying a per diem from twenty twenty in the year twenty twenty-one. So she would like, uh, all our per diems in by December fifteenth. If we could try to do that, please keep that in mind. It, uh, saves them a ton of work, and they may be very busy if they're doing a recount, uh, in the future here. So anyway, are there any other announcements?
I will only announce that, number one, it's good to see you all again, you disappeared, you went into the nether. So it's good to see you, you didn't just actually disappear, uh, there is no December county board meeting.
Yes, I was going to get to that, and, uh, wish you, uh, pleasant holidays coming up, uh, with Thanksgiving and, uh, Christmas, if I don't see you, uh, until after the next year, so, uh, this meeting is adjourned, and thank you all for participating. Stay safe and try to stay healthy.
Stay healthy, everyone, bye-bye, happy holidays.